Buddy, welcome to the regular meeting of the Woburn City Council for May 16th, 2023. Just a reminder that tonight's meeting is being recorded and broadcast. I'd ask that you please silence your cell phones so as not to be a distraction and that you join me in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Counselor Campbell?
Present.
Counselor Demers?
Present.
Counselor Dillon?
Present.
Counselor DeAmbro?
Present.
Counselor Farillo?
Present.
Counselor Gaitley?
Here.
Counselor Mercer Bruin?
Here.
Counselor Viola?
Present.
President Concanon?
Present. Just a note that, as you can tell, Counselor Gaitley will be participating in tonight's meeting under the City of Woburn Remote Participation Policy. He will be joining us, as I said, on the phone, and that all votes tonight will be by roll call. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that Diane J.
Stand by, Counselor Gaitley. Stand by one, please. Counselor Demers?
Make a motion that Diane J. Stifler be named the Clerk of the City Council Pro Tem in the absence of the Clerk of the Council?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Counselor Campbell? Aye. Counselor Demers?
Aye.
Counselor Dillon?
Aye.
Counselor DeAmbro?
Aye.
Counselor Farillo?
Aye.
Counselor Gaitley?
Aye.
Counselor Mercer Bruin?
Aye.
Counselor Viola?
Aye.
President Concanon?
Aye. With that, I will swear in.
I, Stephen G., do solemnly swear that I will be of true faith and allegiance to Commonwealth of Massachusetts and will support the Constitution thereof as clerk of the City Council Pro Tem.
As the clerk of City Council Pro Tem.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye.
Aye, Diane J. Stifler.
To hereby accept the position.
I hereby accept the position.
Of clerk of City Council Pro Tem.
Clerk of City Council Pro Tem.
To act in this capacity.
To act in this capacity.
For the purpose of the City Council meeting.
For the purpose of the City Council meeting.
Of May 16th, 2023.
Of May 16th, 2023.
And do hereby promise to act.
And I do hereby promise to act.
In accordance with statutes.
In accordance with statutes.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Gaitley, your motion? Counselor Gaitley, you want to make a motion on the minutes?
Say it again?
Want to make a motion on the minutes?
I want to make a motion to suspend the sense of the reading of the previous journal and approve.
Second.
Motion is second to dispense with the reading and to approve. Roll call, please.
Counselor Campbell? Aye. Counselor Demers?
Aye.
Counselor Dillon?
Aye.
Counselor DeAmbro?
Aye.
Counselor Farillo?
Aye.
Counselor Gaitley?
Aye.
Counselor Mercer Bruin?
Aye.
Counselor Viola?
Aye.
President Concanon?
Aye.
I would also like to make a motion on the new petitions to grant the Shamrock Running Club a special permit event.
Second.
On July 4th.
There's a motion and a second to approve the special event permit for the Shamrock Running Club on July 4th. Roll call, please.
Counselor Campbell? Aye. Counselor Demers?
Aye.
Counselor Dillon?
Aye.
Counselor DeAmbro?
Aye.
Counselor Farillo?
Aye.
Counselor Gaitley?
Aye.
Counselor Mercer Bruin?
Aye.
Counselor Viola?
Aye.
President Concanon?
Aye.
Make a motion that the next two matters be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and License?
Second.
Motion is second that the next two matters, taxi license for Cheka Cab of Woburn and livery license for Cheka Cab of Woburn, be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and License. Roll call, please.
Counselor Campbell? Aye. Counselor Demers?
Aye.
Counselor Dillon?
Aye.
Counselor DeAmbro?
Aye.
Counselor Farillo?
Aye.
Counselor Gaitley?
Aye.
Counselor Mercer Bruin?
Aye.
Counselor Viola?
Aye.
President Concanon?
Aye. And the next petition?
Make a motion that the matter be referred to a public hearing for the Superdog Grooma 77, Winston Street, for a special permit under Section 7.3.1 of the Woburn Zoning Ordinance?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Counselor Campbell? Aye. Counselor Demers?
Aye.
Counselor Dillon?
Aye.
Counselor DeAmbro?
Aye.
Counselor Farillo?
Aye.
Counselor Gaitley?
Aye.
Counselor Mercer Bruin?
Aye.
Counselor Viola?
Aye.
President Concanon?
Aye. Next up are the public hearings.
Mr. President, point of clarification?
Counselor Demers?
If there is an absence of a member representing NSTAR, I would like to make a motion that we take these all collectively.
I second that.
Motion is second, no objection.
Is there anybody here from NSTAR?
I don't see anyone. Nobody here from the petitioner. Hearing no objection, we can take them collectively. See, these are five petitions by NSTAR Electric doing business as Eversource. The locations, if you could, Counselor Demers?
Yes. So, the first petition would be to install approximately 341 feet of conduit on Beach Street. The second one is a grant of right of way to install 574 feet of conduit on East Forest Park Road to the end of Thomas Street. The third petition is to install approximately 44 feet of conduit on Main Street to one new manhole in Campbell Street. The next petition would be to install 96 feet of conduit in Main Street to one new manhole on Franklin Street. And the last one would be to install a new hip guy on existing pole on Mishawam Street, excuse me, Mishawam Road. And I'd like, I think, Mr. President, these have been matters that have been dwindling here on our agenda for quite some time. And I know this furthers our frustration with the utility companies that we've had to deal with, and this costs us column inches in the Woburn Daily Times to continue to be printing these. So, I do have a motion after we open the public hearing, just because that's proper procedure to open the public hearing, but I think we should be sending a communication to the utility company, asking them to either proceed or withdraw without prejudice and have them refile with the fee again to recur some of the costs that we've spent.
I'll second that.
So, at first, at first, I'll make a motion that we open up the public hearing on the five petitions collectively presented by NSTAR.
Second.
There's a motion is second to open the public hearing on these five matters we've taken collectively regarding NSTAR Electric, DBA, Eversource. Roll call, please.
Counselor Campbell? Aye. Counselor Demers?
Aye.
Counselor Dillon?
Aye.
Counselor DeAmbro?
Aye.
Counselor Farillo?
Aye.
Counselor Gaitley?
Aye.
Counselor Mercer Bruin?
Aye.
Counselor Viola?
Aye.
President Concanon?
Aye. Is there anybody here tonight who would like to speak to any of these petitions from NSTAR Electric, DBA, Eversource? We read out the five locations of these petitions. Seeing nobody, if I could, a point of order. We did receive a communication from the Superintendent DBW, Counselor Mercer Bruin.
Thank you, President Concanon. I just want, first of all, I want to thank City Council Demers for making that motion. I attempted to make it three months ago, and they have been given more than enough time. And the communication he referred to, I don't know if we've accepted it into the public record, but we have a communication dated Friday, May 12th, from Superintendent Jay Duran. And actually, if it's okay with you, President Concanon, can I read it?
Certainly.
"City Clerk Higgins and City Council President Concanon, I have made repeated requests to Eversource on the matters attached in the correspondence below. My understanding is that many residents are asking the same questions. I cannot issue a recommendation in any manner at this time until my requests are addressed. I recommend these petitions be tabled or removed from the agenda if Eversource does not want to provide the requested information to properly evaluate their petition. Please call with any questions, Superintendent Duran." So, I support Counselor Demers' future motion 100%, and let's just be done with it, and they can come back and start over again. Thank you.
Counselor Dillon?
I also support that. I've spoken to Superintendent Duran, and he has worked very hard at trying to get his resolve about a lot of cooperation, so I have to get it done.
I'm not sure if we did officially receive the communication. Could we just do that?
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Second to receive that communication from Superintendent. Roll call, vote.
Counselor Campbell? Aye. Counselor Demers?
Aye.
Counselor Dillon?
Aye.
Counselor DeAmbro?
Aye.
Counselor Farillo?
Aye.
Counselor Gaitley?
Aye.
Counselor Mercer Bruin?
Aye.
Counselor Viola?
Aye.
President Concanon?
Aye. So, with that, we've received the communication. We have the gist of the matter in front of us. The public hearing is open. No one is present. Doesn't appear anyone's here to speak on that. What's the will of the council?
I'll make a motion to continue this to the regular meeting of the City Council on June 20th and request that a communication be sent from the clerk, or, excuse me, from the City Council requesting that we receive a response from NSTAR or a petition to leave without prejudice.
Second.
Madam Clerk, do you have that?
Yep.
Okay, there's a motion and a second that we continue this to the regular meeting of the City Council on June 20th and send that communication as referenced. Roll call, vote, please.
Counselor Campbell? Aye. Counselor Demers?
Aye.
Counselor Dillon?
Aye.
Counselor DeAmbro?
Aye.
Counselor Farillo?
Aye.
Counselor Gaitley?
Aye.
Counselor Mercer Bruin?
Aye.
Counselor Viola?
Aye.
President Concanon?
Aye. That passes.
Next on the agenda, we have a petition from Valentino J. Tachi of 660 Main Street, Woburn, for special permit under Section 5.5.1 of the Woburn Zoning Ordinance, as amended to bring an additional fill to the inflow, excuse me, to infill a low area that is subject to flooding at 2 Lowell Street. The public hearing has been opened. I'll make a motion that we receive the communications from both Greg Room, the Assistant City Engineer, as well as the Planning Department.
Second.
Motion is second that the communications be received, made part of the permanent record. Roll call, vote, please.
Counselor Campbell? Aye. Counselor Demers?
Aye.
Counselor Dillon?
Aye.
Counselor DeAmbro?
Aye.
Counselor Farillo?
Aye.
Counselor Gaitley?
Aye.
Counselor Mercer Bruin?
Aye.
Counselor Viola?
Aye.
President Concanon?
Aye. Mr. Tachi, would you like to speak to the council on this matter, please? If you could just give us your name and address for the record, please?
Valentino Tachi, 21 Endicott Road, Boxer, Massachusetts.
You have that?
I do have some photos.
Make a motion to accept those as part of the permanent record?
Second.
Motion is second to receive these and make them part of the permanent record. Roll call, vote, please.
Counselor Campbell? Aye. Counselor Demers?
Aye.
Counselor Dillon?
Aye.
Counselor DeAmbro?
Aye.
Counselor Farillo?
Aye.
Counselor Gaitley?
Aye.
Counselor Mercer Bruin?
Aye.
Counselor Viola?
Aye.
President Concanon?
Aye. Mr. Tachi, would you like to speak to the council on this matter, please? If you could just give us your name and address for the record, please?
Valentino Tachi, 21 Endicott Road, Boxer, Massachusetts.
Do you have that?
I do have some photos.
Make a motion to accept those as part of the permanent record?
Second.
Motion is second to receive these and make them part of the permanent record. Roll call, vote, please.
Counselor Campbell? Aye. Counselor Demers?
Aye.
Counselor Dillon?
Aye.
Counselor DeAmbro?
Aye.
Counselor Farillo?
Aye.
Counselor Gaitley?
Aye.
Counselor Mercer Bruin?
Aye.
Counselor Viola?
Aye.
President Concanon?
Aye. Mr. Tachi, would you like to speak to the council on this matter, please?
The area that is a low area is there in the center, and you can see that this is mostly, at least our intention, is an aesthetic and landscaping issue. Since that area is cleared, it's kind of an unsightly area. Our intention is merely to take what is currently like a crater and a dip in that area and make it a more gradual and regular slope to the lower area. We will fill it with six-inch minus stone so that it's able to accept rainfall and it's not going to be a runoff situation. We plan on putting a filter fabric over it and then six-inch of topsoil and plant a wildflowers or, you know, wild grass on it and just make it basically a beautification effort. That's the intent. But since it requires more than the 100 cubic yards of, I'm putting it before.
Have you had a chance to review the engineer's memo and the planning department memo?
I was unfortunately on vacation last week. I was picking up my daughter from college and just saw it today when I was catching up to the emails that came in last week.
Okay. So, they raise a few concerns that we're probably going to need to have answered.
I can address them. In fact, one of her questions I know off the bat was included in the package. She had mentioned that it didn't have existing and finished grades, but the package should have had that included. It did have an elevation. She noted that it was, there was an aerial photo. That aerial photo had the existing grades and our proposed grades.
Okay.
One thing she did complain about, and this is legit, was that I didn't give her what the quantity of fill would be. And I wasn't trying to hide that. I just didn't see on the petition a spot where it was submitted.
Typically, what we would do, and I won't speak to the council just yet, but typically we would review what's been provided to us by city department heads, get some information from the petitioner, and perhaps send it to committee where we can dig deeper into some of these issues, but we'll see how that plays out. Are there questions or comments at this point? Counselor Demers?
Thank you. How are you doing, Mr. Tachi? So, I think at this point, with the concerns of the engineering department and also points raised by the planning department, I think there's a little bit more work to do. So, I mean, I would be willing to, you know, give more time so that you can address these thoroughly, just to cover the concerns. Is this a rush item for you or?
I wouldn't call it a rush item other than that it's, you know, there is lingering aesthetic.
Sure, sure, sure. No, my thought would be that we would make a motion, you know, obviously to continue this and then refer it to the Special Permits Committee so that you can bring us your responses and any further information, but I would, it would be, I think it would behoove you to reach out to the planning department and speak with the Assistant City Engineer that provided us with the memo. That way, all questions that are raised will have responses for us at that special permit committee meeting so that we can see that those concerns are addressed and maybe make a recommendation back to the full City Council for our June 20th.
I did reach out to Tina already.
Okay, great.
And sent her some of the documentation that was, that I had handy.
Okay, great.
Kind of a follow-up.
Great, yeah. I mean, I don't, I don't see a problem here, but I'm also not an engineer or a planner.
Understood.
So, I want to hear their further recommendations to us after they've seen your responses.
All right. With due respect, if we defer, when we defer this, as we know it's happening, when would it be likely to be deferred to?
It would be that we'd have our special permit meeting at the next special permit. Would that would be?
Well, it'll probably be a committee meeting Monday.
Monday.
And then a full council meeting after that.
And if the concerns of the committee are met at that time, a recommendation could be sent back for our June 6th meeting.
Oh, fantastic. All right.
Okay. I'll set you. Counselor Dillon?
Yes, I do concur with the good counselor to my left that let's make sure we have everything right. This is my wad. I have been out to take a look at it, and anyone who's out there knows the Tachis keep their property pristine and they want to continue to do so. But again, let's follow the rule and make sure that the city engineer and we look closely at the planning board's recommendations and get it right and move forward. Thank you.
Counselor Mercer Bruin?
Yes, I absolutely support sending it to committee because there's too many open questions, and I'm sure we can work through it. I also have concerns about the notations, Mr. Tachi, and here about abutting properties that the fill appears to be encroaching not only onto the abutting property but also onto existing buildings on the parcels, which you may or may not own, I don't know, but, and also the water, you know, the issue with the stormwater, for me, that will have to really be, no pun, but flushed out to move this forward. So, thank you for anything you can do to get these questions answered.
I already spoke with, permission to answer, John Trombley, who's really the only abutter that's impacted because 2 Lowell Street is our property, and he's in agreement with me on how we're approaching this. In fact, he recognizes it's an improvement to the backyard as it is, you know. Right now, that's what he's looking at in his backyard, so when I explained to him our intent, he liked it so long as the concerns that you've already, you know, described are met. And the concept is exactly that. I mean, I know a desire to create a, you know, a runoff condition.
Of course not. Right. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Viola?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to echo the same sentiments that my fellow colleagues had, that I do have concerns about the runoff into the lots next to it, so I look forward to hearing more about this in the Special Permit Committee meeting. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Anything else, Mr. Tachi, before we open the public hearing?
Nope.
Okay.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion is second to open the public hearing. Roll call, vote, please.
Counselor Campbell? Aye. Counselor Demers?
Aye.
Counselor Dillon?
Aye.
Counselor DeAmbro?
Aye.
Counselor Farillo?
Aye.
Counselor Gaitley?
Aye.
Counselor Mercer Bruin?
Aye.
Counselor Viola?
Aye.
Counselor President Concanon?
Aye. Is there anybody here tonight who would like to speak to the petition by Valentino J. Tachi Jr., 660 Main Street, regarding the property of 2 Lowell Street? Please come forward if you could give your name and address for the clerk, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name's John Cowan. I live at 2 Wyman Street. I'm an abutter to the property, and I have some grave concerns about this permit, namely because they've already brought fill into the property. I spoke with the building department, and the answer I got was they were only bringing in less than 100 yards of fill. I have pictures on my phone that say otherwise. He's brought in a significant amount of fill to that property. Conservation was not aware of what was going on in that property. I know it's not declared a wetland. It was classified as a low-lying area by the DEP a few years back, but it also, the Zone 2 Well Protection District crosses right through this property, so it bears some significant oversight in what happens. And the other thing I noticed was that he had a fire hose running from the property over to the canal bed, so he was draining water from one piece of the property to a different watershed, which is a significant violation of conservation wetlands guidelines. So, I don't oppose to the improvements he wants to make along Main Street. I think those are good things, but where is that water going to go? If you, and Mr. Dillon, Counselor Dillon, you know, if you walk down Hart Street, my house doesn't get flooded, but there are a significant number of houses on the back of Hart Street that their yards are regularly filled with water. Where is this water going to go? I saw the reports from the planning board and from, I think it was the building department. Both of them recommend, as many of you have, that it be peer-reviewed. There needs to be an independent engineer looking at this, simply for, I hate to say it because I just do not trust this developer and the way they've acted in the past. It should be reviewed and it should make sure that it is done right, but right now, I'm very concerned because he's already illegally brought fill into the property. He's illegally displaced water on a different piece of the property, and nobody seems to care. So, thank you very much for your time, and I'll follow it through the committee.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here tonight who would like to speak to this petition at 2 Lowell Street?
Thank you.
You can come up here.
So, Teresa Murphy was informed about everything we did, as was Thomas Quinn, before we did anything. I submitted it multiple times via email and met both of them in person, and both of them came out to see, as did several members of the Conservation Commission, to see what we were working on. The fill that we brought in never exceeded 100 cubic yards more than what we had there originally. I extracted some sludge and brought in six-inch stone in order to make sure that the concept of what we were doing was going to work, as simple as that. of what we were doing was going to work, as simple as that. As far as the comment about running a hose out of there, it was only during the process of removing the sludge and bringing the new six-inch in. That's it.
Okay. Counsel Dillon, did you have something?
I'm good, thank you.
Counsel Demers? No?
Out of the stand.
Okay. So the public hearing is open. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Seeing nobody. Still will.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing to the June 6 regular meeting of the City Council and refer the matter to the Committee on Special Permits.
Second.
There's a motion second to continue the public hearing till our meeting on June 6 and to refer this matter to the Committee on Special Permits. Roll call, please.
Counsel Campbell.
Aye.
Counsel Demers.
Aye.
Counsel Dillon.
Aye.
Counsel Deambro.
Aye.
Counsel Farillo.
Aye.
Counsel Gately.
Aye.
Counsel Mercer Bruin.
Aye.
Counsel Viola.
Aye.
President Concanon.
Aye. So that matter will be referred to committee. You'll be notified. Next up.
The petition by Kevin J. Little and Susan A. Little, 36th Lake Avenue, Woburn, to amend the Woburn zoning map. The 20 parcels of land as shown on the plan entitled Lake Terrace, Lake Circle, Rezoning Area.
Good evening, Mr. Tavi.
Good evening for the record.
I'll make a motion that all communications be received and made part of the permit record, including the planning board response.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, that all communications be received, made part of the permit record. Roll call, vote, please.
Counsel Campbell.
Aye.
Counsel Demers.
Aye.
Counsel Dillon.
Aye.
Counsel Deambro.
Aye.
Counsel Farillo.
Aye.
Counsel Gately.
Aye.
Counsel Mercer Bruin.
Aye.
Counsel Viola.
Aye.
President Concanon.
Aye, that passes.
Okay. For the record, Joseph Tavi, an attorney with the law firm of Ruben &amp; Redmond, 500 Unicorn Park Drive in Woburn. I'd like to submit at this time several documents I'll refer to during the presentation. The, the first one, you may already have a copy of this, the planning board recommendation dated May 10. I have a current petition which includes a signature line, the petition to amend the zoning map, the, the zoning map itself. And then the last document was a petition that was dated June of 2022, submitted by some of the abuddists to Counsel Campbell way back in June, expressing their wish to rezone the property back to the original R2 zoning district. Then I have a copy of a zoning map, last dated July 1980, showing the, the subject property in the R2 zoning district. I think that's, that's it. That's the last, last document.
I make a motion to accept and make part of the permit record.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, to receive and make part of the permit record all of the documents referenced by Attorney Tavi. Roll call, votes.
Counsel Campbell.
Aye.
Counsel Demers.
Aye.
Counsel Dillon.
Aye.
Counsel Deambro.
Aye.
Counsel Farillo.
Aye.
Counsel Gately.
Aye.
Counsel Mercer Bruin.
Aye.
Counsel Viola.
Aye.
President Concanon.
Aye, that passes. Okay. Let me stand, copy is here, Diane.
Thank you.
Stand by, Dick. We're just distributing the documents. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, the, the petition is in this matter of Kevin and Susan Little, owners of the property at 36th Lake Avenue. They're seated here in the second, second row. The petition seeks to amend the zoning map of the city of Woburn to rezone the applicant's property, along with eight other properties on Lake Avenue, five properties on Lake Terrace, six properties on Lake Circle, from the R1 zoning district to the R2 zoning district. All the properties listed in the petition were in the R2 zoning district until around 1985, when they were rezoned to residential 1. The applicant has requested that all of those properties be rezoned to the original R2 zoning district. Zoning text amendment, straightforward, requesting that 20 parcels of land shown on the plan entitled Lake Terrace, Lake Circle, Rezoning Area be rezoned from R1 to R2. When you go through the neighborhood, many of the, the families have lived in their homes for many years. The applicants themselves have lived in their home for 40 years. Some of the families in the district would like to provide housing for disabled or elderly parents. Some have grown up and grown old in Woburn and they'd like to stay in their hand, in their own homes, having the ability to convert. To a two-family helps them stay in their homes. So in terms of the, the zoning regulations, to convert an existing single-family home to a two-family with minor modifications, meaning no addition to it, Section 6.1 requires a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet, frontage of 80 feet, and then a front yard setback of 25 feet, both side yard setbacks are 20 feet, and rear yard setback at 30 feet. So of the 20 lots, 14 of those lots qualify only by lot size and frontage. Some of them may not qualify because the side yard setback, rear yard setback, or front yard setback may not be in compliance with zoning. So if someone in that situation wished to convert to a two-family, they, they would have to obtain a variance from the Board of Appeals. The other way you can construct a two-family is if you have a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet with 100 feet of frontage and the same setbacks, 25 in the front, 20 on each side, and 30 in the rear. So of the 20 lots, four of those qualify, but only for, by lot size and street frontage. So the petition that's before you this evening does not single out one lot to be rezoned from R1 to R2, but rather 20 lots, which are located on the border of the R2 zoning district. So you have all the properties along Arlington Road up to Main Street, Pickering, that whole area. At Pickering, the front lots, all the way down to Lake Terrace, and in, in that area were all zoned R1. So the, the point being that if the petition only singled out the Little's lot, that clearly would be considered spot zoning. This is not the case here. The council has the ability to approve the change without any concern of being challenged because you're looking at a larger group of lots, 20 lots to go from R1 back to the R2 zoning district. Before the planning board last Tuesday, they held a public hearing on the proposed amendment at the conclusion of the meeting. After a, a short discussion, the board voted unanimously to recommend to the City Council that this petition be, be approved. So with that, we would, we would request that this petition that puts the properties back into the original zoning be approved. We'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Comments or questions at this time? Counsel Campbell.
Comments, really. I met for the first time with Mr. Little last year, and before I looked into the, exactly what he was looking for, all I heard was rezoning from 1 to 2. And I told him at the time that I was apprehensive in supporting zoning changes in Woburn. But this particular instance, I have to honestly say, this is a, a very unique circumstance surrounding this petition for the request. The circumstances are, is that the, the home, many of the homes already are two-family because it was zoned R2. So when I first was running for Alderman, I remember walking up and down the streets and I could, I couldn't figure out why they, they were two families when I knew it was zoned R1. I thought it was very peculiar. Now I understand, you know, what was going on. And the zoning change took place around 88, I believe, something around 88, 89. Mr. Little bought his property as a two-family in 84. And what it seemed like, it seemed, I, I don't know all the details, but it does seem like the, the zoning change was encouraged to help stop a particular house from being built, hoping that that wouldn't take place. And, but it still did. It did in, in the end. So for me, I feel very comfortable changing back. We are going back to where it was originally. These, these homes are, already have two families in them. So I think to move forward with the zoning change is a good idea, and I think it would help that whole area. What also, I talked with Tina Cassidy, the planning director, in, in great length on this, because we wanted to make sure that the area of Lake Circle, which are right now small ranches, could not be turned into an area with huge two families, two-family houses. And they, for it to move forward, they would have to get a variance from the Board of Appeals, not so much to build a two-family, but even to add on, to become a two-family because of the way the properties are built. So that also gave me peace of mind about approving this and moving forward with it. I think that's about it. Yeah. Thank you, Joe.
Any other comments or questions? Counsel Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I mean, the way I, the way I see it is, you know, is, is there anything further you could add to that description as to why this was changed from R2 to R1 in the 80s?
No, I, I have the same information that Counsel Campbell, it could have very well been brought by-
Pretty much cut and dry. It was basically reverse spot zoning.
I'm sorry?
It was almost reverse spot zoning because they didn't want a project to go through.
That's what it seems like, yeah.
You know, that, that's what it appears. It could have been the counselor of the Alderman back then that actually brought, brought the petition.
No, I think to Counselor Campbell's point, I think there are checks and balances in place with the zoning change for the Board of Appeals, whether there be variances. I'm, I'm reading these documents here and seeing all these people that are requesting to be recorded in favor of the petition, and I've, I've never seen this many people agree on one thing before us on the City Council, especially when you have all the neighbors involved. I think there's neighborhood buy-in to this. I am all for anything that we can do to help residents stay in their homes, if they're longtime residents of Woburn, but then also opening up opportunities for the family to keep the property within the family, and then for some of the younger property owners or prospective property owners wanting to be able to move into a family home and be able to afford to do so. I think, you know, if, if we don't see much objection to this from any other constituents on the matter, I think it's, it's pretty straightforward. So I, I really do appreciate the planning board's recommendation, as well as seeing how many folks are in favor of it, and then kind of basically just restoring it to the original zoning intent that was in place before 88, 89. So I'll be, I'll be supporting the motion.
Thank you. Counsel Dillon?
Yes. Counsel Tavi, just from my knowledge and perhaps the public, you, you pointed out one or two lots may be considered spot zoning, but 20 doesn't. Is there a, a legal number that changes that definition, or it's just a bigger quantity we're looking at?
Yeah, no, if we, if we were looking to take the same area and make it R3, you know, the cases I've looked at typically like to see close to five acres of land. Here, when you have, the cases address properties that border an adjoining zoning district that is being proposed for the properties. So you have R2 and you just want to continue the R2 versus just, you know, zeroing in on Mr. and Mrs. Little's lot and saying, we'd like to zone this R2 but keep everything else R1. So there's no, there's no magic number.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Thank you. And just a second follow-up question, where you had said they may have to go for a variance if it's pre-existing non-conforming, I would think it would probably be a special permit, which ZBA seems to have an easier process than a variance. Am I correct in that?
Correct, yeah. So thanks for mentioning that. So if someone didn't meet all the dimensional regulations, they would either have to obtain a variance, or if they have a non-conforming structure, depending on what the nonconformity is, they could ask the Board of Appeals for a special permit as well.
Which goes a smoother process than a variance in many instances.
Yeah, the standard, the legal standard is a lot different. One is you have to show you have a hardship to get a variance. The other is, is it more substantially detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming use?
Thank you. Thank you, President.
Thank you, Counsel Dillon. Counsel Mercer Bruin.
Uh, thank you. And thank you for asking the question, Counselor Dillon, about the, the abutting properties, because that was one of my concerns, is, is do we have R1 that's already abutting or the property that it just spilled down the road, the next person, next word, so. So, so the homes were R2. They got rezoned to R1. Mostly everybody's using them as two families right now. Is there, um, so could people currently, under the zoning now, could they legally rent out the apartments to other people versus just having family in them?
Well, if they, if they had a legal, you know, two-family, they could, they could do that.
Right. So the way it exists now, they couldn't, even though they may have, you know, Auntie Jean and Uncle Sam living in different parts, that's family. But now, when we presumably move it to R2, right, they will be able to legally rent that space to anyone that they desire to rent it to.
Right, yeah, if they're, you know, eligible for a two-family home, correct?
Right, of the 20 properties. Okay. I just wanted to be clear on that. And it seems that clearly most of the neighbors support it, so I'd be interested to hear if there's any opposition to it, but if there, if there's not, I'll certainly follow the lead of the City Council or Representative Ward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Deambro.
Attorney Tavi, I'm in favor of this. For whatever reason, it went from R2 to R1, now it's going back to R2. There, there are numerous, there's thousands of checks and balances in our ordinance books that we'll take and make sure that if somebody wants to take and make it into a two-family, all, all of the codes and everything are in here. So I'm in full support of this, as well as I'm in support of having people stay in Woburn, live in Woburn, and have family if they want to live with them, to stay with them, whether it's, you know, I, I have gone through this as well with my mother and father, so I'm in, I'm in support of this.
Thank you.
You'll have my vote. Thank you.
Counsel Viola.
Thank you, Mr. President. At the beginning, before the hearing tonight-
I'd like to speak.
I hear you, Counsel Gately, right after Counsel Viola.
I was very apprehensive to see that we were going to rezone, because that's one thing that I am against, is rezoning, spot zoning. But after looking into this further, it seems like, as Counselor Campbell said, it was rezoned R1 to stop a building of a two, R2, or two-family home that was there, but the house went in anyways. From reading all the people that signed on the petition, it's pretty clear that all the neighbors want this rezoned. So with that being said, I will be in favor of this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Gately.
Yeah, first of all, I want, if it hasn't been done yet, I want to make sure that the abuddist map, Lake Terrace and, and the Lake, Lake Circle, will be accepted and made part of the permit record.
As part of the application.
Yeah, that was, that was voted on. Thank you.
Okay. Second of all, I know the area pretty well down there, I know the drainage, you know. I know the people down there. They're good people. They don't move a lot. There's not a lot of moving down there. Well, what is being done down there now is, is a good thing for them, a good thing for the neighbors. I have no opposition whatsoever on it. I'll just say, hopefully it goes through and good luck. They're good people and they deserve a break.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions at this time?
I just have one more comment.
Counsel Campbell.
Last summer, last July, once again, showing that the neighbors are for this change, they were willing to come here for a meeting with me, and there were, I would say, there were about 20 of them, and they wholeheartedly supported it. So for them to come out and actually meet to talk about it really is a big thing, because a lot of times we try and it just doesn't work. So I just wanted to make, make sure, put that on as part of the record.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anything else, Mr. Tavi?
Uh, no.
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
Motion, a second, to open the public hearing. Roll call, vote, please.
Counsel Campbell.
Aye.
Counsel Demers.
Aye.
Counsel Dillon.
Aye.
Counsel Deambro.
Aye.
Counsel Farillo.
Aye.
Counsel Gately.
Aye.
Counsel Mercer Bruin.
Aye.
Counsel Viola.
Aye.
President Concanon.
Aye, that passes. Is there anybody here tonight who would like to speak on this petition regarding the proposed zoning map amendment to rezone certain lots on Lake Terrace, Lake Circle, Lake Ave from R1 to R2? Please come forward, one at a time. Give your name and address for the clerk, please.
I'm Lori Jean Minetti. I'm at Six Lake Circle. And I'm not really opposed, I just, I have questions. I actually was away in July for a child's graduation in France. So I guess, I'm not quite sure what R2 will give it. Is it only two families? And I know I called Joanne, I believe it was, trying to confirm what it could actually do, and you just mentioned Lake Circle. I guess I'm afraid of opening it up to another condo development, and that's, I actually have no opposition to the Little's house being converted to a two-family. If we did a spot zoning, I would be up here cheering up and down, saying, go for it, go for it, go for it. So like, that's why, I just really have questions and I really wanted some clarification on what this would do to the neighborhood in general and what it would open it up to long-term. You know, thinking future, 10 years down the road, does this open it up to another big condo development that we could put in down there? That type of thing.
So we'll, we'll hear the comments and the questions. The short answer to that is no, but at the end of the comment, we'll give the petition another opportunity to speak, but we take your question if you have anything else.
Well, and I had, when you said you asked about Lake Circle, you were talking to the planner, what did you mean about, like, when you said it wouldn't really change Lake Circle? What did you mean by that?
The rant, because there were ranches, of course, right? You have the ranches there. The way that the properties are set up, the setbacks are so small in the front and on the side-
Right.
-that for them to be able to put a two-family in there, it would be very difficult. You could add on to your property, but then at that point, you prob, once again, because of the setbacks, you would have to get the variances from the Board of Appeals and things like that. So it's not going to be that one area, it's not going to be that easy to put a two-family in there.
Thank you.
Which made me feel more comfortable, so that's what I was saying.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Please come forward. Again, if you could give your name and address for the clerk.
Good evening. My name is James Coronas. I live at 38 Lake Ave, which directly abuts the Little's property. Going back a ways, 89, 90, I purchased the empty lot that was next to the Little's family. I built my home. The Little's purchased the, their property from our family. It was, my father had purchased it back in the late 70s. Since I've been there from 89 and 90, the Little's, the Little's have been great. What they're asking for, to let their family stay together, it works. The protective mechanisms that the board was concerned with as far as special permits or variances, it's a sense of security for everybody that things can't go as, as what we all wanted, as what they wanted. I'm just up here to say, the Little's, I've watched what they've done over the years. They take their, I have to keep up with them as far as keeping the, the property looking good. They make it hard for me. And I think the board's voting in favor, it's, it's a step in the right direction, and I'm, I'm 100% for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please come up.
Hello?
Hold on.
Standby one, Dick. Yes, sir.
Hi, Daniel Janitas. I'm here for me and my wife. We live, we live at Three Lake Circle in Woburn. And really, this is a matter of information that you should consider. The, something I heard here was that the, the houses where we are are occupied mainly by two families, and that just isn't so, except unless you consider a child who has grown into an adult and now lives with them, and with maybe somebody else, then okay. But otherwise, they're single families and single-family owner-occupied property. And I'll give you an example, the people directly across from us, one lady, to the right of us, a single woman, and to the left of us, a couple. Those are the immediate surrounding families. Those are the immediate surrounding families, and there's no two families in there, it's just those people I mentioned. And they're living there. And of course, you know, we've been there for 58 years, and when we went there, what attracted us was it was a nice neighborhood, well-kept, and still is, owner-occupied, and that's what attracted us. Soon as you come down Lake Ave, and you turn into that Lake Terrace, and then Lake Circle, it's beautiful. I hate to see it changed. My wife and I probably, I hate to say it, will not be around long enough to see changes. That doesn't, shouldn't make any difference. It's a beautiful area that should be maintained as such. So for that reason, we moved there, and I told, I think it was Mr. ... Yeah, yeah. He came around with petitions last year, and I told him I would not sign his petition, and I still won't, but I said I would not oppose this. So I don't know. What's in your judgment of, for the future of this area? And Lake Terrace is no different, except that, I guess it's Lake Cir... Lake Avenue that your house is. So is that... Lake Terrace, the single family, or, yeah, you know, single families in those two houses there, and there are two other houses there. Brick houses, very nice. There's one family there. So it's always been one family, Lake Terrace and Lake Circle. And nobody's doing anything funny there to have some other family come in and live, or... So anyway, that's what I wanted to tell you. I know some of you very well, and so I know that I trust your judgment. That's it. Unless you have some questions you want to ask me? All right. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dan.
Anybody else who would like to be heard? Please come forward, ma'am. Again, if you could give us your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Virginia Volpe. I live at Nine Lake Terrace. I see a lot of familiar faces, and I see some new ones as well. I live on Lake Terrace, and I've lived there for 52 years. And I was one of those people who signed from Zone 2 to Zone 1. And I'm here to get it back to Zone 2. It's time. And, you know, we did have an issue with a particular person, and that's really why we all jumped in, we were all fearing this, what was going to happen. And either way, we signed it, and it didn't make a difference, because it was built. So it makes no difference now at this point. But to see someone who really needs a parent to live with them... My mother was sick, and we went up to ask for an addition, and we were denied. But she ended up living in our home, rather than having the addition for her. So it was difficult for her, because she felt, you know, like she wanted her own place. So I just wanted to say, I think it's a wonderful thing that he's doing, and I think it's great. And, you know, for any of one who can take their parents and help them, that's awesome. That's awesome. I don't only live at Nine Lake Terrace, I also own the property next door at Five Lake Terrace. So, and my daughter's living there, which is great, because trying to keep the family together. So I just want to say I'm all for it, and thank you very much for your consideration. And I think we should applaud him for doing what he's doing with his parents. I think it's wonderful. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to be heard? Evening. Your name and address, sir?
My name's Danny O'Keefe. I live at One Lake Terrace, and I've lived there since 1978, when all those changes were made. I grew up at 30 Lake Ave, and that whole neighborhood's always been great with the two families, the one-family houses. I've known the Little's. Keith used to work for me when I had my own business. He's a good kid. And I'd like to change so that he can stay there with his parents or take care of his parents.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anybody else?
Evening, Councilor.
Good evening.
Thanks for all your time. Thanks to all my neighbors, my parents.
Your name and address.
Keith Little, 36 Lake Ave. I live with my folks over there. One thing first, you know, everybody's saying I'm taking care of my parents. They're really taking care of me, they have their whole life. So that's really the truth of it all. But we're just trying to keep the house in the family, keep our family together. I've grown up there, went to all the schools. Residents, all my sisters, my cousins, we all live there. We would just like to stay and enjoy the neighborhood that we love and care with all our neighbors that are here, showing support for us. Again, I think we all, I don't want to reiterate, but, you know, this was R2. We're just trying to change it back to the R2 that it was when my parents first bought the house. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody might have on the council.
Council Gailey, do you have something?
No, I just coughed, thank you.
Okay. And seeing no other questions, Mr. Tabby, do you have anything? Again, seeing no other parties here who wish to be heard tonight, raise your hand. No?
If I forgot to thank anybody, thank Joe as well.
No, the only thing I have to add to your question earlier, or I think, question here. The only uses that are allowed in the R2 are single-family, two-family by conversion of a single-family, two-family by new construction, and townhouse development, but you have to have 18 acres of property, so much like Winning Farm or Shannon Farm, those type of uses, so...
Okay. Anything else that anyone would like us to be aware of?
Make a motion to close the public hearing and approve the zoning map amendment?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing and to approve the zoning map amendment. Roll call, vote please.
Councilor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilor DeMers?
Aye.
Councilor Dillon?
Aye.
Council DeAmbro?
Aye.
Council Farillo?
Aye.
Council Gailey?
Aye.
Council Mercer...
Aye.
Council Mercer Bruin?
Aye.
Council Viola?
Aye.
Council Concanon?
Aye, that passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, everybody.
Good luck.
Good luck. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that the next two matters be taken collectively on the CCF New Boston property.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, that the next two matters, CCF New Boston, at 216 New Boston Street and 225 Merrimack Street, be taken collectively. Roll call, vote please. Before I ask the clerk to call the roll, just a note that Council Gailey and Councilor Farillo may not vote on the matters, but may participate. Roll call, please.
Council Campbell?
Aye.
Council DeMers?
Aye.
Council Dillon?
Aye.
Council DeAmbro?
Aye.
Council Farillo?
Abstained.
Council Gailey?
Abstained.
Council Mercer Bruin?
Aye.
Council Viola?
Aye.
Council Concanon?
Aye, that passes. Mr. Tabby, would you like to be heard on these two matters?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion that we receive and accept the two communications, first being a communication from Attorney Tabby, respectfully requesting that the public hearing on both matters be continued to the June 6 meeting. And then further, a communication dated May 12, 2023, that was received by Superintendent of Public Works, Jay Duran, regarding the 216 New Boston Street, 225 Merrimack Street.
I'll second that. There's a motion and a second that the communications be received, made part of the permanent record. Roll call, vote.
Council Campbell?
Aye.
Council DeMers?
Aye.
Council Dillon?
Aye.
Council DeAmbro?
Aye.
Council Farillo?
Abstained.
Council Gailey?
Abstained.
Council Mercer Bruin?
Aye.
Council Viola?
Aye.
President Concanon?
Aye, that passes. I believe...
In the absence of Attorney Tabby having any comments, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we open the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to open the public hearing. Roll call, vote.
Council Campbell?
Aye.
Council DeMers?
Aye.
Council Dillon?
Aye.
Council DeAmbro?
Aye.
Council Farillo?
Abstained.
Council Gailey?
Abstained.
Council Mercer Bruin?
Aye.
Council Viola?
Aye.
President Concanon?
Aye, that passes. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to be heard on the two matters that have been taken collectively at New Boston Street, 216 New Boston, 225 Merrimack?
Make a motion that we continue the public hearing to the regular meeting of the council on June 6?
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the public hearing be continued to the regular meeting of the city council on June 6. Roll call, vote please.
Council Campbell?
Aye.
Council DeMers?
Aye.
Council Dillon?
Aye.
Council DeAmbro?
Aye.
Council Farillo?
Abstained.
Council Gailey?
Abstained.
Council Mercer Bruin?
Aye.
Council Viola?
Aye.
President Concanon?
Aye, that passes. Next, we have committee reports. First committee report on the agenda pertains to the order regarding the two fire stations. Just a point of order from the chair. These matters were referred to the Committee on Infrastructure and Public Lands during that committee. It was the will of that committee that the two matters be handled separately, that the two fire stations be treated as separate orders. The proper method for this council would be to divide the question. The committee was supportive of that action, so moving forward, it would be appropriate if we take the necessary steps to get to where the committee wanted us to be.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules to take the following from the Committee on Infrastructure and Public Lands?
Second.
Motion and second, roll call, vote.
Council Campbell?
Aye.
Council DeMers?
Aye.
Council Dillon?
Aye.
Council DeAmbro?
Aye.
Council Farillo?
Aye.
Council Gailey?
Abstained.
Council Mercer Bruin?
Aye.
Council Viola?
Aye.
President Concanon?
Aye, that passes. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to be heard on the two matters that have been taken collectively at New Boston Street, 216 New Boston, 225 Merrimack?
Make a motion that we continue the public hearing to the regular meeting of the council on June 6?
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the public hearing be continued to the regular meeting of the city council on June 6. Roll call, vote please.
Council Campbell?
Aye.
Council DeMers?
Aye.
Council Dillon?
Aye.
Council DeAmbro?
Aye.
Council Farillo?
Aye.
Council Gailey?
Aye.
Council Mercer Bruin?
Aye.
Council Viola?
Aye.
President Concanon?
Aye, that passes. Make a motion that the order related to Fire Station Number 3 be referred back to the Committee on Infrastructure and Public Lands?
Second.
On the motion?
On the motion, there's a motion and a second on the motion, Council Viola.
I'd like to send a memo to the city engineer, asking if they could give us some understanding of what it would take to make a street behind there where the fire station is, and what their opinion of it is.
Is there a second on that?
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second that the council's...
On the motion.
On the motion, Council Mercer Bruin?
I understand and support the spirit of it, but that's going to be some heavy lifting to get some real... If the goal is to get some ideas on cost, I really think that's going to be a big ask for the city engineer, unless it's not timely and we have time. I'm just concerned about being able to get that kind of information. That's all.
Could we perhaps invite the engineer to a meeting?
Sure. I think that, you know, if he could, if there's an expectation that he has to deliver something to us on paper that says, "Yes, we can, no, we can't," we're not going to see that right away. He just, his office just doesn't have the bandwidth to do it.
Further discussion, Council DeMers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think the intent is to just get his comments, kind of a ballpark estimate of what it would, what the city would incur, if any move would be going forth. And I'm not, I'm not asking him to spend 10 hours on a study. I just, I want to hear his comments, and maybe that gives us either further understanding of what it takes to move forward, any type of process with regards to constructing a street, or the legal ramifications that would occur if there needed to be any land swaps or any land takings thereforth.
And that doesn't, through the chair?
Certainly.
That also wouldn't answer any kinds of questions about traffic patterns or movements or implications on other areas outside of that one area. It's a, it's a big question. That's all I'm saying. I understand the intent, I'm not against exploring it. I just feel like if you're going to ask Jay Corey to just to ballpark something, people might feel like, okay, this is reasonable, this is something we could be doing, when it might not even be remotely close to what could be done. There's warrants that have to be done, there's a lot to it. So I just want to make sure the expectation is clear as to what... I support it, I understand what people are looking for potentially over here, but it's not a quick answer.
Okay. Council Dillon, did you have something?
Yes, I appreciate everyone's comments. This falls into my ward, so I really, really do appreciate the conversation, and that was my whole point at the committee meeting. It's often said that city council doesn't have the strength that we maybe should. This is one time where this does fall into our area, and it's good to air it out, and before we relinquish that authority, let's make sure we're just talking about it. So that's what we're doing, and that's all I asked at the committee meeting, and I appreciate everyone's feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Viola?
Thank you. Through the chair, Council Mercer Bruin, I'm just looking for his rough ballpark figures and opinion, just to see what he thinks of the whole idea.
Yeah, through the chair, I heard you. And again, I know the manpower challenges down there, and I know the challenges you have over in your own ward with that light on Bedford Road and all that business, there's wouldn't, I just know how busy his office is, and I know what's required, and I wouldn't want the council to say, oh, it might be this much? There's so much more that has to go into it, but I honestly don't, I, I support 100% not doing anything with this land until some of that's flushed out. And, you know, there's plenty of other property in the city that has yet to be sold, um, that could be sold instead of this, you know, to meet some other goals, right? So if, if Counsel Dillan wants to keep this set aside, I support it 100%.
Thank you.
100%.
Okay. So there is a motion, um, that we send a communication to the city engineer regarding this matter. Uh, would you like to clarify what you'd like that to say?
Sure. Um, basically, I'd like to say, uh, just looking for his quick opinion of looking over, um, the property and what it entailed to draft, um, his opinion just for the street, for a street to be placed there.
Okay. So the, the motion would be that we send a communication to the city engineer requesting his, uh, brief opinion of the prospects of continuing Clinton Street, uh, to where the fire station property is currently.
Correct.
Could we also invite him to the meeting to-
Sure.
-to deal with questions? So that's the motion?
That's the motion.
I second that.
There's a motion and a second. Everyone understand the spirit? Okay, roll call, vote.
Counsel Campbell.
Aye.
Counsel DeMers.
Aye.
Counsel Dillan.
Aye.
Counsel DeAmbro.
Aye.
Counsel Farillo.
Aye.
Counsel Gailey.
Aye.
Counsel Mercer Bruin.
Aye.
Counsel Viola.
Aye.
Counsel Concanon.
Aye, that passes.
Make a motion that the second order related to Fire Station Number 2 be adopted?
Is there a second on that?
I'll take a second.
So there's a motion and a second that the order regarding Fire Station 2, North Woburn, the disposition, the original order, uh, be adopted. Roll call, vote.
Counsel Campbell.
Aye.
Counsel DeMers.
Aye.
Counsel Dillan.
Aye.
Counsel DeAmbro.
Aye.
Counsel Farillo.
Aye.
Counsel Gailey.
Aye.
Counsel Mercer Bruin.
Aye.
Counsel Viola.
Aye.
President Concanon.
Aye, that passes. Thank you. Next up is Personnel, Personnel Committee.
On the appointment of Congress, Casey, to serve on the Woburn Board of Cemetery Commissioners, I'll make a motion that the committee report be adopted?
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the committee report ought to pass, be adopted. Roll call, vote, please.
Counsel Campbell.
Aye.
Counsel DeMers.
Aye.
Counsel Dillan.
Aye.
Counsel DeAmbro.
Aye.
Counsel Farillo.
Aye.
Counsel Gailey.
Aye.
Counsel Mercer Bruin.
Aye.
Counsel Viola.
Aye.
Counsel Concan, President Concanon.
Aye, that passes.
And the Communications and Reports, a communication dated April 28, 2023, was received by Charles O'Connor, the parking clerk from the police. I'd like to make a motion that we receive that matter and place it on file.
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the matter regarding the parking clerk memo be received, placed on file. Roll call, vote, please.
Counsel Campbell.
Aye.
Counsel DeMers.
Aye.
Counsel Dillan.
Aye.
Counsel DeAmbro.
Aye.
Counsel Farillo.
Aye.
Counsel Gailey.
Aye.
Counsel Mercer Bruin.
Aye.
Counsel Viola.
Aye.
President Concanon.
Aye, that passes.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn. Roll call.
Counsel Campbell.
Aye.
Counsel DeMers.
Aye.
Counsel Dillan.
Aye.
Counsel DeAmbro.
Aye.
Counsel Farillo.
Aye.
Counsel Gailey.
Aye.
Counsel Mercer Bruin.
Aye.
Counsel Viola.
Aye.
President Concanon.
Aye, that motion passes. Were adjourned at 8:10. Thank you.